And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is now the time for public comments on non-agenda items. If you filled out a card, please come forward. I have one card for this open form. Peter Katz.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and the Planning Commission and everyone in the audience. I'm Peter Katz. I'm a 55-year resident of the city of Santa Ana, and I'm president of the Comm联 board that oversees all 64 neighborhoods in the city of Santa Ana. I'm here tonight just to thank this commission for its courageous vote on the 2525 North Main Street project a few weeks ago. I sat through seven hours of testimony here and seven hours of testimony at the city council meeting last week, which has continued for another two weeks with 80 speakers yet to go before the council. What I want to address the issue is, I represent 64 neighborhoods in this city, and we're trying to preserve those neighborhoods. We have unique quality of life in this city, and we need to preserve that. This is why people want to live here, and we cannot continue to ethnically cleanse our neighborhoods by building high-rises on the edge and drowning people out with traffic. I mean, projects, there's lots of open space in this city for large projects. You have a stretch of land on Grand from Santa Ana Boulevard all the way to the 22 freeway, South Main from Warner to the railroad tracks. There's a lot of places that don't affect neighborhoods for these types of projects. I went to the joint city council meeting on the Willawick project over in Garden Grove, and you're about to destroy another neighborhood. The Santa Anita neighborhood is one of the oldest neighborhoods in the city of Santa Ana, and it's got the short shrift in this city for many, many years. The staff report that was presented by both city councils showed that economic development for the last 10 years in this county is flat in every area, including office high-rises, and even development of apartment units are basically flat and not keeping up with the population growth, which is starting to stagnate as well. But two areas that continue to grow are tourism, which is expected to double in the next 50 years, and the entertainment industry. The entertainment industry now makes up 13% of the state's revenues, and it continues to grow astronomically. In 2014, a 17-story high-rise was purchased on Wilshire Boulevard in Los Angeles. It was an office building that was 50% vacant. Five years later, it's now 60% vacant. We have one industry in the city of Santa Ana, and that's government employees, whether they're state, local, or county, and that's what we drive on, and that's where our revenue comes from. But guess what, folks? Within 10 years, 40% of those jobs will be gone due to automation. So we need to start thinking soundly how we're going to preserve and develop the city so that it brings in revenue without destroying neighborhoods and driving people out, because what you will have left is what you got in parts of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Is there anyone else who would like to make a public comment at this time? Hearing none, we'll close the public comments on non-agendized items, and we'll move on to the consent calendar. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of January 28, 2019? So move.
Second.
Second. Any conversation?
So, at the end of the public hearings, I was reading online that it said that we asked both the association and the church to work together, but I believe it was mostly the church addressing the concerns of the community. I don't know where that was, it was in the minutes. In the summary.
That is on page A7 of your packet, is the summary of the churches.
Oh, yeah. So the commission generally agrees that it is in the best interest of both parties to attempt to work together to resolve the issues. I believe it was mostly the church trying to work with the community to address those issues of the community.
I can go ahead and update that if that's what the commission generally agrees.
Sure.
Okay, no problem.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second, with an amended change to the minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's 5-0, two absences. Item number two on the consent calendar is the approval of the absences of Eric Alderetti and Lynette Verena. Do I have a motion, please?
Oviara.
Second.
Second.
Any conversation? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? It's 5-0, two absences. We'll now move on to the business calendar. The formal action of the planning commission shall become effective after the 10-day appeal period unless the city council holds a public hearing on the matter. Then, formal action will become effective on the day following the hearing and the decision by the city council. An appeal from the decision or requirement of the planning commission must be filed with the clerk of the council and a copy sent to the planning department within 10 days of the date of the commission action. The appeal may be made by any interested party, individual, or group. Moving on to item number one, this is the time to consider item number one, conditional use permit number 2018-27 to allow an automated car wash, and variance number 2018-13 to allow a driveway within 150 feet of the intersection for the project located at 1703 East 17th Street in the arterial commercial C5 zoning district. At this point in time, we have no presentation, so we're going to open to public comments. I have no cards at this point in time. Does anybody like to make a comment on item number one? Would you, when you're done, would you fill out a card and give it to the secretary, please?
My name's Bridget Catalano. I represent the owners of the Monterey Apartments that back up to the north side where they want to put the car wash. And even with the parking lot that they want to put in and with the street light, we're still going to have noise that directly affect my residents, who don't even have balconies there, just have windows that are going to overlook that car wash. So I just want to oppose them being able to move forward. I was here the last time as well with the car wash at that location.
And your name, sorry?
Bridget Catalano.
Bridget, okay.
Yes, and representing the owners of the Monterey Apartments.
Okay.
So.
Thank you, Bridget. Does anyone else want to make a comment on item number one at this time? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll bring it back to the commission. It has been suggested that we move to continue this item to the next regularly scheduled meeting, which would be February 25.
Commission chair, you might want to reopen the public, if you want to take testimony on this at your next meeting, you should reopen the public hearing and then continue the public hearing to the next meeting.
Okay. So at this point in time, we're not closing the public hearing, we're continuing the public hearing. Okay? All right?
That is correct.
But we still have to make a motion as to...
I'll move to continue the item to February 25.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of continuing this item to February 25, 2019, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? 5-0 and 2 absences. Okay. This is the time and place to consider item number two, zoning ordinance amendment number 2019-01 to amend the zoning district known as specific development number 82, SD 82, to allow schools to operate within the SD 82 zoning district. This action will allow Vista Heritage Charter School to operate at 2609 West 5th Street. Vince, do you...
This is who you see.
Yeah. If anybody, first of all, have any of the commissioners had any contact at this point in time with the applicant?
Yes. Mr. Chair, I have contacted Pam Sipeto via phone.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I also was contacted and spoke with Ms. Sipeto, Pam Sipeto, on behalf of the applicant, by phone.
Angie?
I did receive the text message to request for the discussion, for conversation, but I did not return the call.
And I received the text message from Pam Sipeto and also did not return the call or just, but did respond that I would be meeting her on Monday at the commission meeting. So everybody's done their disclosures? Good? Vince?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, planning commissioners. I'll just hold on one second for...
Excuse me, I have a question, sir. You were saying if anybody wanted to say or did something regarding to this, we had the opportunity?
With regards to this item, number two, anybody can, in the public hearing, anybody can make a statement for...
Okay, it's just that I saw this gentleman walking so fast over there, I'm confused. I would like to say something.
Well, hold on. This gentleman is from the planning department, and he's going to be doing a presentation.
Okay.
There are a number of steps in the process. At one point in time, we will open the process for a public hearing.
Thank you.
At that point in time, you can talk. Have you filled out a card?
No.
If you haven't filled out a card, then I suggest you fill out a card between now and the time that we have the public hearing. That'll expedite matters. If anybody else hasn't filled out a card, please do so at this time. Okay? You say?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Planning commissioners, good evening. The item before you is a request, a zoning ordinance amendment, which is to change the zoning code that applies to this particular property. It's known as SD 82, specific development number 82, and it's regarding properties at the northeast corner of 5th and Fairview Streets. More specifically, the request is to modify the SD, the language in this SD document. Back in 2008, we approved a special zoning for this property and created all new zoning standards, which is called SD 82. So the request is to modify this document to allow schools as a permitted use within this zoning district here. We also propose to incorporate some operational standards for school uses, and some of those include restricting a location for the drop-off and pickup activities, restricting outdoor activities to have them be inside the buildings, providing a parking management plan for their monthly events as well as their yearly events, and then having a periodic review, just in case there's some issues that arise in this location. We have the ability to go back and reopen it up and apply certain standards to mitigate any potential concerns. No other changes are proposed to this SD document but those couple of changes. And then we also need to add a definition of schools within our municipal code, which is chapter 41, our zoning document. Here's the location of the properties. This is also known as Civic Center Business Park. The properties that have the SD 82 designation are highlighted in red. Essentially, it's four buildings, it's two there in the center. Temple Calvario operates, owns and operates the majority of those buildings in the center right there. They're looking to sell three, the one building to the far west, thank you, that building to just right there into the green. Then those two buildings to the left are light industrial uses there that are part of this industrial park. You also have a small building to the left there on the corner of 5th and Fairview. That property right there on the right is not a part of this project complex whatsoever. It's zoned industrial. And then to the left there on the corner of 5th and Fairview, that small little carved out farther left there with the highlighter, the green, farther left to the corner, please. There you go, right there. That one is part of Civic Center Complex, but it's zoned M1 light industrial. The property to the north is auto repair uses, also part of the Civic Center Business Park. That's also zoned light industrial. So the only properties that have the SD 82 are those highlighted again in red. And then you can see the surrounding uses to the north across from the OCTA right-of-way where the light rail is going to be, single-family. To the south is all industrial. To the east, which is to the right, is industrial right-of-way and then some more industrial uses. And then to the west is Spurgeon Intermediate School as well as a goodwill industry site. So when looking at the project here, there's some history for the project site. First of all, this site has transitioned to industrial complex over the years, from industrial complex. When it was first constructed back in the early 1980s, 1983 to be exact, when it first started construction, it was all industrial complex. In 1985, Temple Calvario relocated from downtown into the building, one of these buildings over here, and expanded their presence at the location. So since that, mid-'80s, 1985, since then, it's gone from industrial complex over to industrial, religious, as well as educational complex. In 2008, the planning commission and council approved the SD 82, which further solidified and clarified the land uses. It basically said, Temple Calvario, you do have the legal right to operate here now. They were illegal, non-conforming use. We cleaned up our industrial zones back in the late '90s and prohibited churches out in this location. Temple Calvario wanted to expand their operations, so we had to create this SD 82 to allow Temple Calvario to operate at this location. So this is why the SD 82 now is in effect, because of Temple Calvario's expansion on this property. A school was always part of Temple Calvario. When they moved in in the mid-'80s, 1985, a couple of years later, they operated a school at this location. Then the school eventually evolved from their kindergarten preschool to Edward Cole Academy for many years, to now what we have here is the Vista Heritage School. So because the school is out there now, it's not permitted by the zoning, it's considered to be legal, non-conforming. So by approving this zone change here tonight, the zoning ordinance amendment tonight, what we'll be doing is creating a path where it's not illegal conforming use, just like the churches, like any industrial use out there. As part of this project here, Ross can, well, the parking meets our code. Actually, the parking is less intense than what our code requires there, so the site meets our parking. And then again, we have operational standards that we're proposing that's in your resolution or in your ordinance that's going to address any potential impacts that could occur from this location. We've had several meetings with the association over the last year and, say, 15 months, and a lot of the comments are heard back is, how are we going to be sure we're compatible out there? How are we going to make sure that you're not impacting their businesses? So a couple of the key elements are, the outdoor play area, which is currently located on the outside of the building, right in that area, will be relocated to the inside. One of those bays would be a 10,000-square-foot indoor area for play, soccer, basketball, any type of recreational activities. So that's number one. That will now become a parking lot, which it is not right now. So that will reduce the potential impacts and potential conflicts between the two types, the two uses, the school and the industrial uses. And the second one is they're going to change their pickup and drop-off locations. Currently, their pickup and drop-off is located in that, right there in front, where we have buses, and then to the left, that north-south alleyway between the buildings, the left side, the other side, the bigger side on the left, a little farther to the left, please, right there. That whole alley right there is a spot between the school and industrial uses, and it creates a conflict at times when the parents are coming and loading and picking up their kids. So we're going to restrict, prohibit drop-off and pickup of that alley. That's going to be in the front of the building, and then in the back of the building over there, where they'll come in that driveway, loop around, and then go back out through Temple Calvario. Therefore, eliminating the conflicts between the uses. So with that, what we're recommending before you this evening is that you recommend to the city council that they approve this modification to the zoning document. That concludes my presentation. I can answer any questions that you may have.
Does the commission have any questions, Vince? Angie?
In regard to the parking for this, for the school, are there any discussions to get additional parking for the staff?
Per our code, they exceed our parking requirement. They need almost 70 spaces. There's 140 spaces out there at this location right now. So there's no reason to pursue additional parking. Now, we have a provision in the operational standards where if something does occur, we find out that there's more intense uses, we can go back out there and take a look at the parking situation and do other things. Maybe we take a look at 5th Street, maybe they acquire other parking. But there is a parking management plan requirement in that operational standard that we go back every year and connect with them and just see where we're at parking-wise. They're looking to ramp up over five years. It's not going to be turn on the switch and all of a sudden we have, you know, 900 kids there. It's going to be a gradual ramp up over five years. So we'll be able to monitor what's going on over the next few years and just see what the impacts are occurring out there.
Thank you.
Any other question? David?
Follow-up, thank you, Mr. Chair. We received several correspondences over the last couple of days with regard to the parking, and I mentioned there's an association there, the Civic Center Business Park Association. There seemed to be either conflicting or at least unclear information as to whether parking is designated to a specific building or whether it's shared parking based on agreement or CCNRs for the associations. Can you help us?
Yes.
Get some clarity there?
Back in 1984, there was a CCNR, reciprocal parking agreement amongst all those properties you see right in there, including the buildings that are surrounded by green and are not part of the zoning. So there's three properties, all those properties there, reciprocal parking agreement. And it says, basically says they have the right to park wherever they want within that whole complex. In 2016, there was an amendment to the CCNRs that we took a look, the city attorney's office and staff looked over, and our interpretation of it is that it now is freestanding. So buildings A and B have their own parking, and then C and D have their own parking. But the auto repair up above also still maintains the reciprocal parking rights. So if they need any additional parking, they could park in the other properties. So when you ask if the parking is complied, based upon the CCNRs, based upon our analysis, that area in red has 144 spaces available out there. The school needs 62. The other property that's occupying the space is the church. They don't operate during the day. They have a very small presence. They have an office presence there of about maybe 10 to 12 people. So 70 school parking spaces for the school, another 20 for the church, is 90, still below the 140-plus that are out there already. So that's why we say there is not a parking issue.
Angie?
Yeah, my understanding is, from the email from Robert Williams, is that parking is shared between the blue area and the red area. So my concern is, how's that going to get addressed? Because, I mean, you have all those units that need that parking, so we have to take that into consideration.
Well, again, that was the original CCNRs. The document that was provided to us says something different. And so the association properties are kind of working amongst themselves to try to figure all that out. But our read of it, city attorney and planning, is that that was dropped back in 2016.
So it's a sign?
It's a sign, yes.
David?
Just as a follow-up, just for clarity, because there were several letters and emails that were received that spoke to the, this idea that it is still community, if you will. So am I correct or is the commission correct in understanding that those individuals that are out there representing, that communicated to us, and the secretary believes that some of that communication corresponds to us, is that they are mistaken, that the property owners or managers who we receive correspondence from are not aware that the CCNRs have been updated? Is that...
Yeah, I'm not sure if there were. I know the, both associations, both representatives signed the documents, so we have, so it's building A and B signed it, as well as C and D signed the document, so they're all, whether the information got distributed, I don't know. Now, a couple of things we've done that would help alleviate the parking problem. Number one is by stopping from having that drop-off pickup between the buildings there. Because one of the issues that was raised in the meetings I attended was that when cars are stacked there, the people in industrial buildings can't get in and out of their space, can't get their trucks in there to do their loading and unloading. So by directing them outside of that area, it helps to open up that parking space. And the other one is, by moving the playground to the inside, opens up 30-plus spaces on the top that are out there right now. So those two different mechanisms are going to help alleviate the parking problem that's, you know, imagined out there. I went out there, parking was pretty, was a pretty full parking lot, but there were still several parking spaces out by Temple Calvario on the east side and up along the back area there. So those spaces, plus that 30-space parking lot, in my analysis, there's ample parking out there. They may not be able to park in front of their building, but it's no different than going to the mall and not parking in front, having to park on the third floor of a parking structure. Parking is still out there, it's just not going to be right in front.
Thank you. My assumption is that even if they are mistaken, sometimes it's, I don't know who the individuals that we receive correspondence from, whether they're property owner, tenant, there might be some misunderstanding communication amongst them, but I just wanted to be clear that, you know, what's being represented and explained to us here, that it is designated parking, that that in fact is...
And they're very likely owners, because this whole area was condominiumized and probably 30 different condominiums, so more than likely, everybody owns their own space, their own condominium out there. So we're probably dealing with property owners for the most part.
Thank you.
Ken?
In 2008, the school was approved under the specific development 82 because the school was part of the church. Since then, the school no longer part of the church, it became independent. So now, the school must change zone, the specific zone changed to be able to not conform with this standard code?
So the school was out there since at least, well, for many, back in the late '80s, early '90s. The Cole Academy was a charter school back in 2003, operated that site, where basically Temple Calvario got out of the school business and leased that space out. So that school is legally non-conforming, and they can stay right where they're at in that center bay and operate forever. They've got the legal non-conforming rights. What's triggering this is they want to expand into the wider ones. The legal non-conforming rights only gives them that space they're in right now, the right to stay in there. And so they're asking to go bigger, which means we have to amend the SD to have school uses allowed out there.
Thank you. So the amendment was part of the request on the application as well, right?
And this, the amendment was part of this application in 2017, 2018. Yeah. Back in 2008, Temple Calvario was happy, they were just fine operating, having a small school in that location. A bigger school was never raised as an issue, so we never addressed it back as part of the SD, the original document.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I've got a few. My first question is that the incorporating the operation standards, are all of those standards at this point in time established?
They are not. They're all brand-new.
Okay, so that concerns me that we're being asked to approve something, and we don't have the operational standards that we're going to go and use to comply with this at this point in time. That's one concern I've got. The second concern I have is that in looking at this, the number of students that are going to be added to this, we've got basically 270 students going up to 870 students, and we're clearly within less than 500 feet of an intermediate school in San Diego Unified Spurgeon, which has got probably about 400 to 600 students there, and they're all going to be let out at the same time. So I don't see anything that has to do with a traffic analysis or a traffic study on this particular item, because I believe that's going to be, it's right now, right now, it's a challenge if you're down at Spurgeon at 3:00 in the afternoon when school lets out, bring in another 600 students. I think it's going to be a challenge, and quite a challenge, from a traffic point of view.
Thank you. There was a traffic study done as part of this project that was reviewed by Public Works staff. The only mitigation it identified was a signal at the corner of 5th and Sullivan. So Public Works is looking right now to secure some grants for that signal.
So they're saying that the signal at 5th and Fairview...
5th and Sullivan.
But they're saying that one at 5th and Fairview is not an issue?
Yeah, it was not an issue. Did not raise any mitigation measures for any type of activities. It studied...
Did they go at 3:00 in the afternoon?
It studied all day, pretty much, yeah. It studied normal school operations.
Because I've driven down it many times and been stuck in a tremendous amount of traffic when school's out.
Yeah. The only mitigation measure it had was the signal at Sullivan, which also helps the school, as kids are walking northbound to go to school and southbound going back, it provides them a safe zone to be able to cross the street and access the property.
So was that study included in this package?
No, because that is something that we'll study as part of the school. The issue before you is really the land use issue, is a school appropriate at this location? If you say yes, then part of my ministerial job is to go work with the school to be sure that they meet all the standards, all the operational standards, all the parking standards, everything identified, any mitigation measures. All that's ministerial. It's no different than you get a CUP before you. You don't see the whole shopping center goes through, you just get that one little piece of it. And so what you're looking at today is just the land use piece of it. So part of my responsibility is to make sure the school complies with all the standards that we have applicable to this project, if you say move forward.
But one of the things we're doing at this point in time is, normally this should've or could've, under the current municipal code, we're supposed to be issuing a CUP for this. And we're now not going to issue a CUP, and what I believe was discussed was the fact that we were going to have, we were going to run it on operational standards, which included periodic reviews. And that was the way in which we were going to be substituting what we're doing with a CUP with regards to operational standards. But we don't have any operational standards, what we're saying right now, and that, again, concerns me.
Well, the standards are in place. Before they get any occupancy permits, they have to provide all those studies, all the documentation that justifies their work. They don't, if it doesn't justify it, then they can't move forward. So we need the parking plan, we need the special event plan, we need the annual school plan. So we need all those different items. So we need all those different items, we need that before they get their occupancy permits.
Okay. Couple of other questions. I mean, right now, they've been, they've been operating with an outdoor playground.
Correct.
That outdoor playground is going to be eliminated?
Yes.
And therefore, the only option is going to be doing an indoor program?
They've got almost 10,000 square foot bay that's going to be dedicated to their recreational activities.
So with the after-school process that is from 3:00 to 6:00, there's going to be no outdoor activities, it's all going to be indoors?
That's correct, and one of the operational standards has that condition. Item 4C talks about school activities shall be limited to indoors only.
Okay. And now that we also, again, my understanding is that this was a 7:30, 8:00 in the morning to 3:00, 3:30 in the afternoon?
It will be...
And now it's being extended in hours? How does that play into the church at this point in time from the standpoint of Monday through Friday, and what are we doing on the weekends?
The church only operates after hours, like 6:00, I guess 6:00, 6:30, they come in and do their functions, and then after hours, the school's not going to be operating. The school lets out at 3:00, and about a third of their students leave the premises. So about 2/3, so let's just say 900, so 600 will trickle out between 3:00 and 6:00 during those next three hours of after-school care. They're not all going to leave at 6:00. They'll be slowly, you know, leaving the property. So...
Okay.
So there's not a conflict between the church and the school.
And again, the other question I have is, is no activities with this, with this school on the weekends?
Correct. Monday through Friday only.
Okay.
And the school is here also to get answers to some more detailed questions. Yeah.
We just, we want to talk to you first.
You got it. I'm here for you.
Yeah, I know you are. All right. Go ahead, Cynthia.
So in the past, we've had, specifically, I can't remember the name of the restaurant on Main Street at Warner, Main and Warner. They had to comply with trash enclosures and they had to build it. So we, it wasn't moving forward until that was done. Here, we're moving something forward and it's not done as well, right?
Anything that required by code, trash enclosures, loading zones, striping landscaping will have to be done before they get occupancy. So it's all part of the construction. As I do internal construction, I do parking lot construction and outdoor construction, all the non-interior ones.
So I guess what's the normal standard for any project? Because the others weren't allowing them to provide occupancy until they met, complied with these different standards. But here, we're allowing, asking for approval to rezone it, and then they're off because they're already existing, but these things aren't done yet.
Well, they're existing in that they're one bay, but when they do the construction for their other two bays, they'll do all those other site improvements at the same time. So it's the same rationale for any project. Before they get occupancy, they have to do all their improvements, whether it be conditions of approval, operational standards, code mandates. They have to do all that stuff before we issue that certificate of occupancy and say, you know, turn on the lights.
Do they have certain amount of time to complete that?
Permits are good for six months once they acquire them. So within that six months, they've got their own internal timeframe. They probably want to open up during the start of a school year, is my guess. So it could be August of this year, they want to get it all done.
Okay. Thank you.
David?
Mr. President, I'm just curious whether there are any members of the public that have requested to speak. I'd be interested in hearing if there are any public...
We have six, we have six cards right now. And I believe we've got one or two more. So let's say six to eight cards. Yeah. Any other questions? Go ahead, David?
None at this time. I may have some follow-up.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vince. Secretary, have we received any written correspondence with regards to this item?
We have, and it has been distributed to the commission as well as posted on our website.
Now, it's my understanding that we also received a binder that has a number of letters inside of support for this particular project. For the record, whoever produced this particular item, I would like to have an understanding of how many letters we are referring to so that for the record, we can put it into the minutes of the meeting.
Thank you. Hi. My name's Hector Pineda, and to answer your question, we have about 470 support letters from parents and members from the surrounding community. We also have support letters from surrounding property owners, and then we also have one letter of support from the Artisia Pilar Association, all in support of the project.
Add it all up, what do you got?
Probably right under 500 support letters.
Fine. We'll leave it at that.
Okay. Thank you.
Under 500, we just want to have something for the record. Okay. Next, would the applicant at this point in time like to speak? And if you do, please come up and identify yourself.
Good evening, Honorable Board, Planning Commission. It's a, I'm going to just take this down a little bit here. It's a privilege and a pleasure to be here tonight, and I want to thank you, and I want to thank the stellar staff at the city planning for the opportunity to be here tonight. My name is Don Wilson, and I'm the superintendent of Vista Charter Public Schools, and I'm also the founder of Vista Charter Global Academies. And I started my career about 30 years ago in education, 1988, and I stayed in the classroom for 17 years. The schools in the neighborhoods where I worked served predominantly Latino families and their children, and my work has primarily focused on second language learners, and specifically Spanish-speaking students and their families. As a teacher, I earned the coveted National Board Certification in Second Language Learning, and I started the first dual-language program in Beaverton, Oregon schools. Since that time, I just wanted to prove that I speak Spanish. Since that time, I went on during my master's in educational administration and in curriculum planning. I served as special ed administrator, and I was also the principal of a school where we raised scores six years in a row, becoming one of the top 50 schools in the state of California. I was also awarded Principal of the Year twice. I've done much more, and forgive me for a somewhat self-serving introduction. I know very well that tonight is not about me, but I believe that this project, a project of this scope and importance in the community necessitates a leader with a deep knowledge and of education and a proven record of success. And so I offer you my credentials as an introduction. I hope that the remaining minutes can be used to serve as two, to answer two important questions. The first is why? Why are we proposing a project? And second, what has the community to gain from it? The why is easy, and if you'll forgive me, I'm going to get a little bit personal. Education equals opportunity, and opportunity is what allows someone to achieve the American dream. I spent the last 30 years of my life working with children that historically are not getting the same access to quality education as their wealthy counterparts. However, it wasn't until my last year as a teacher that I learned that lesson, and it came home to understand what our families experience on a regular basis. In October of that year, the psychologist came to me, and she said, "I have a special young boy that I'd like to add to your classroom." She alerted me that he had some issues, but assured me that given the right environmental environment, she believed that he would thrive. His name was Andrew, and I accepted him into my classroom that morning. He was eight years old at the time. I quickly understood what the psychologist meant about what issues he might have. Andrew didn't speak English or Spanish well. He didn't read or write. He couldn't perform basic primary math, preschool math. His behavior was extreme and his attention span's short. After a little digging, I found out that he was being raised by a single mother, who, while she loved him, she had been ill for quite a long time, and she was having to raise him most of the time from the hospital. So he spent most of his time going back and forth between the hospital or being packed between neighborhoods, neighbors to spend the night. Now, Andrew started to make some progress that year, but on March 15th, we got news that his mother passed away. Now, I wish I had time for the whole story, but through a few miraculous events and a little prodding from up above, I was able to adopt Andrew, and he soon became my son. My son Andrew was a handful, to say the least. Educational experts were quick to diagnose him with an alphabet of issues, ADHD, ADD, ODD. Those were just the tip of the iceberg. Needless to say, our educational path was not easy. As we made our way through the grades, one school after another rejected Andrew, punished him, or ignored him in the back of the classroom. We ended up at seven different schools before his graduation. We actually never found a school that served his needs, and he spent grades five through 12 bored, unengaged, and ultimately misunderstood by every school. Now, as it turned out, he was fortunate that I had seen something else in his behavior, and as it turned out, Andrew was misdiagnosed. He had none of those issues, and in fact, he was highly gifted. Once we addressed those issues, his progress was quick, and I'm proud to say that today he's in his fourth year at UCR studying quantum physics. Now, I understand that Andrew's story is heartwarming, but most kids like Andrew do not get the sudden opportunities that I was able to give him. Too many of our kids don't get the support at their schools, and they struggle to find their way. The statistics have not changed in over 50 years that students of color or coming from low socioeconomic backgrounds are still failing their wealthier counterparts. My personal why for this project is that Vista Charter Public Schools, that we see in every one of these children, my son Andrew, that we see his face in their face, and that is our vision to bring them the kind of environment and education that's going to set them up for the rest of their lives. But now, stated simply, our mission is to fundamentally transform the school experience and to provide equitable access to the American dream. Now, to answer how, we do this through our extensive research on engagement, which was my doctorate at USC. Building on a foundation that increases engagement, we incorporate a unique combination of socio-emotional learning, global competence through the International Study Network, and a full steam curriculum, science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics. We believe that globally competent students have broad skill sets and disciplines that are increasingly important to access the American dream. The arts allow our students to achieve the creative heart of these disciplines, are an important part of developing an ethos that keeps the needs of humanity at the center of all they do. When students are given the context for their learning, global education, the technical skills to apply it in the real world through STEAM, and then the social emotional capital to access the American dream, the outcome is deep engagement, lifelong learning, and academic excellence. We are unique among a myriad of today's schools and charters. I'm proud to say that we're the first school of its kind in the nation, making it a unique opportunity for Santa Ana's families and their children. I personally have seen children's lives changed where their education and social emotional needs are met. I have also experienced it firsthand as a father. But the proof is in the pudding, as they say, and since we started our school in Santa Ana, we are outperforming our surrounding neighborhood schools by a significant margin. When speaking of this project, never has the adage, "It takes a village," been more true. This project may have started with one person's vision, but it has quietly grown into community effort. Temple Calvario has walked hand in hand with us, just knowing that we serve the same neighborhood. Our parents are passionate about their school and been part of the process from the start. Open Gate International, a branch of the Pujol Foundation, is in full support and a partner of the project. We have outreach to the surrounding community and have found overwhelming support. We've presented and engaged with the Artisia Pilar Neighborhood Association and have their full support. We have multiple times with our immediate neighbors in the Business Park, and we have spoken individually with all of them and shared our plans with them, and we have, the majority are not only supportive but excited to partner with us. But you don't have to take my word for it. Not only do we have over 200 community members here tonight, I'd like to also just remind you that we've also presented, and we have one for each one of you, the binders with 500, almost 500 signatures in support of this project. We seek your approval for this project today because too many quality programs are only implemented at schools in wealthy neighborhoods. I see my son and every one of these students that we serve, and I know that this project will be an important educational center for a community that is too often underserved and overlooked. It will be a beacon of hope and opportunity for a community that deserves nothing less. I hope that you can see your own children in the faces of our children tonight, and that you vote on our project to support it today. The Vista team, teachers, staff deeply believe that every child, regardless of race, ethnicity, language ability, special needs, or economic level, deserves the same access to the American dream, and it's our vision and mission to make this a reality. With your help today, we will be one step closer to making that dream come true. Should you have any questions about our project, land use, design, traffic, we have a full team here tonight to answer your questions. We want to thank you for your time.
Thank you, Don. Does the commission have any questions?
Thank you very much.
(inaudible) Publicity is now open? Hold on, ma'am. Ma'am? Ma'am? You're not first. Okay, sorry. We have other people listening. All right, thank you. Appreciate that. The first one I have is Edward Garcia Donley. Donley, your mind? Donley, I have Edward. Looks like Garcia.
Yeah, Garcia and Edward Donley. Come in, please.
Okay. Come on up, then.
Well, good evening. We would like to thank you also for giving us the opportunity to come up here and talk to you.
Could you state your name and who you live?
Yes. My name is Graciela Rubalcaba Donley. This is my husband.
Edward Donley, okay.
Okay. The reason I'm about to read this to you is because my husband is technically speaking blind, so I need to read this for him. We, is there something you want to say, or you want to just read it?
Well, you know, they talked a lot about the parking for buildings A and B, but how many spaces are left over for buildings C and D?
Okay, let's read this first, and then we perhaps can hit that. I would like to read this to you. We are property owners of the Civic Center Business Park located at the corner of Fifth and Fairview, which is also the location of Vista Heritage Charter School, 2609 West Fifth Street. Myself and 12 other owners of the Business Park were given notice of expansion. We have several grave concernings regarding the expansion and how the children can be safely located on an industrial park location. We're looking for your assistance protecting the children of this community and our industrial park from the safety concerns and the negative impacts that this expansion will cause. The safety of the children in such close proximity to industrial business and automotive repair facilities is an alarming concern to us and all the other owners, and how this expansion will severely impact the way we all conduct our business. Our concern also relates to such proposed increase in student population to include in elementary-age kids to occupy a commercial property with minimal to no sidewalks and no perimeter of safeguards to ensure our daily operations in this industrial park. The livelihood of small business owners will be greatly impacted due to the school expansion. This expansion possesses a greater safety concern by introducing a much younger population into overcrowded industrial park with heavy traffic from tow trucks, semi-trucks, forklifts, chemical use, et cetera, et cetera. Established businesses, but adds to the... Established businesses, but adds to the already unacceptable liability of the owners that we have expressed about having this industrial park turned into a mixed-use development. To better familiarize yourself with our complete situation, here's a brief history of the commercial park in the late 1980s. In 1990, the city of San Yana wanted to previous location, to previous located Temple Calvario occupied downtown San Yana for redevelopment. So the city insisted Temple Calvario to move in its current location in the Civic Center Business, park of the corner of Fifth Avenue and Fairview. During the next several decades, after decades, the expansion and little attention to zoning, Temple Calvario proposed additional expansion plans in 2008. At that time, San Yana City Planning decided to rezone the commercial property to include the church in the zoning. When the city of San Yana rezoned lot from M1 to SD 82, there was a shortage of several hundred parking spots to meet our current code. In attempt to remedy this lack of parking, the city of San Yana created a variance to allow this large shortage of parking number 2008-04. The variance did not fix, did not fix the problem. It just pushed to the existing owners and the other businesses on this lot to surround, on this, and this business still has to be surrounded by property owners. There was a level of tolerance in the business owners to the Temple Calvario church. Much of the volume was in the weekend, and many businesses do not open. However, allowing to operate in this property has put the industrial owners in a very direct competition with the school for parking on a daily and an hourly basis without the proposed expansion. Concerns for the children: safety. Due to the limited reproducible common area on interest, of all the owners, the proposed property cannot provide proper planning or concern regarding safety for the children. Due to this common on interest, very few safeguards can all be implemented, installed to protect the children from tow trucks, delivery semi-trucks, forklifts, commercial business operations of immediate vicinity to the children. At tour of any elementary school in Orange County, the amount of safety measures that have been installed, implemented far surpassed any proposed plans from Vista Heritage. As I stated above, this industrial park is an association and owned and common by all owners, which is the CCANRs, will never meet the use of the common area property for one individual use.
Casella, could you wrap up in a couple?
Okay.
I've given you two, I've given you two speakers because you and your husband were speaking, so.
Okay.
I've given you two speaking already, so please wrap up.
Okay, well anyways, I really appreciate what Mr. Wilson did. He did excellent, he did great. My heart goes for him. I understand he has a very valid and good reason. The only thing that's very sad, that someone like him could not, could not see the danger that it's not really the right place for children to be attending school, okay? I, like I said, I just don't understand why that place, because it would not be safe for, for the children.
Appreciate that. Edward, thank you, Casella.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. The next person, Don, is this the same Don that just presented?
Yes.
Okay. Consider this taken care of, or do you have something to say in addition to? Okay.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring up somebody with me, support staff.
That's fine.
And we appreciate what they had to say, because for us, safety is number one. And, and absolutely, we would not continue or even think about this project if we didn't think that safety could be had for our children. It should be noted that there have been young children, there's been a preschool on the site for about 20 years, and there's never been an incident on the site. But I'd like to introduce Dr. Colin Felch. He's our principal, he's onsite every day, and let him address some of the things that we've already done to support the safety of our children.
So again, my name is Dr. Colin Felch. I'm the principal of the Vista Global Academies. We have hired six supervision aides in addition to our teaching staff to make sure that all students are safe inside of school and around the premises. We make sure that our morning and afternoon transportation is supervised by a minimum of two staff in the front, if not three on most days. And in addition, this proposed project would actually make it more safe than it even is now by having the students inside the building for all recreational activities. So this, this proposed plan actually makes it more safe. It actually creates a, it mitigates any type of transportation issue that there may be in the morning and afternoon, and we've done significant studies on, on both, which, as you heard, is not an issue in the morning or afternoon.
And I, just to add to that, once the project's completed, once students are in during the day, they'll have, they'll be able to go from one end of the school to the other end of the school without having to leave the premises. So it does create a very safe environment, even from intruders going in and out of the school as well. I'd also like to say that we've met, and I, sorry that I never got to meet Graciela, we've actually, we've gone out and we've knocked doors, and we've met almost every person in the complex where we've had an opportunity to talk to them, and we've discussed what we can do. And part of the traffic plan to mitigate this is that we have eliminated any of our traffic going between sections A and B and C and D, which effectively eliminates any kind of interaction between the school and that side, even with parents going in and out.
Okay, wait, wait a second.
I'm part of the team, so I just wanted to...
But Pam, in all due respect, you put a, you put a card in separate for this, and...
I'm just responding to...
Don is the one that's on right now, speaking. In fact, he's got 11 seconds left, so, you know.
Oh, you can throw that card out.
I'll let Don do it, and you have your time.
Okay, I'll tell him what to say.
I'll have your time.
Just tell him that that's what the traffic and circulation plan is for, so that it can be submitted and regulated.
And she's just reiterating what I was saying, that the traffic plan and the circulation plan, what we've done to mitigate that, that's exactly what that's for, so that anything that happens outside is very well regulated and does not interfere with the other traffic going on in the complex.
So now we have the next thing, Colin, who just spoke on behalf of Don.
It's okay, I have my own, I have my own words. Good, good evening, Honorable Planning Commission. Again, my name is Dr. Colin Felch. I'm the proud principal of Vista Heritage Global Academy and Vista Condor Global Academy, two public charter schools in Santa Ana serving grades K through eight. Prior to coming to Vista, I was a teacher, instructional coach, and assistant principal in Los Angeles. In addition, in 2013, I was named LUSD and Los Angeles County Teacher of the Year for my accomplishments in the classroom. I received my doctorate in education from USC, completing my dissertation on how principals of international study schools promote global competence. My passion, experience, and expertise provided a perfect fit to lead the Vista Global Academies. I am here today speaking to you on behalf of Vista and how our campus expansion will create a positive impact in the lives of our students, the workplace of our staff, and provide a jewel for our community. Our students, many of which who are here tonight, absolutely deserve this. They deserve a first-class building to pair with their first-class education. Our students deserve this investment because they are our future. Our teachers and staff who work countless hours and relentlessly serve the youth of Santa Ana deserve first-class facilities to work in. Our parents deserve to proudly say, yes, my son or daughter goes there. Si, mi hija o mi hijo va aí. Our community deserves this as well. The focus of this building may be on Vista as a school, but these facilities will greatly benefit local churches and community organizations. At Vista, we truly believe that it is essential to serve and to give back to the community, which is why we look forward to partnering with community organizations to use our facilities outside of school time, including Temple Calvario. At the core of all of this is our school and the high-quality public education that we provide to our students every single day. We have already made great strides academically. Last year at the middle school, students who met or exceeded standard in English and math almost doubled across the board. And in seventh grade specifically, we more than doubled our scores in English and math in just one year. In our new elementary school, Vista Condor, only 15% of our incoming students at the beginning of the year were reading at grade level. And fast forward only six months now, we have 46% of our students reading at grade level, and we still have four more months left in this school year. That data will only be enhanced even more with new, larger facilities and classrooms that will allow our teachers with the flexible space to provide more collaborative activities and projects using state-of-the-art digital tools and resources. For those reasons, I strongly urge you to support our proposal, and I welcome you to come and visit the school sometime. I would be happy to give you a personal tour. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Marchand, and I am currently the Social Studies and Leadership Teacher at Vista Heritage. I am in my third year of teaching there, and I was born and raised in Santa Ana, so I feel very comfortable saying that I'm very familiar with the needs of our kids. Some of the needs of our kids are things, are, is, one of the needs, excuse me, is to experience an education that is transformational. So at our school, we like to say, we transform the school experience. We do various things like Hagan, we have council, we do Eagle Hour, among many other things that they don't experience elsewhere. This year, our focus has been global education, and it will be moving forward. So we are teaching our kids to be globally-minded citizens. We are teaching them, showing them how to take action, how to make a difference, whether it's in their communities, whether it's in the state, national, global level. We are giving them learning experiences that I know I didn't have growing up. One of the issues that we're facing, however, is lack of space. Our students for their global ed projects oftentimes work with one another, and because we don't have enough space, they're not able to work as well as they could if they did have the space. If you were to support construction at our school, you would be helping our students be innovative, creative, have the space to have, to work or be creative, innovative in their global ed projects. You would be helping us, help them see themselves through a different lens, to see themselves to what they can be, what they can achieve, that they have the power to make a difference. So all we need and all we kindly ask for is more space, the ability to create more space for them. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Pam Sepetta? Pam? Pam's, no? Okay.
I'm part of the...
Ken Lubin, or Kendra Lubin, sorry.
Hello, my name is Kendra Lubin, and I am a seventh grade student at Vista Heritage. And I have the honor of speaking on behalf of all Vista students. I like Vista because of its amazing atmosphere and its great teachers. Everybody knows everyone, and there's always someone there for you. Here at Vista Heritage, we make the most of the space we have, even though we don't have that much. And my teachers do a really good job of teaching us. And I can only imagine how good they would be in larger classrooms. With our building expansion, we can make our events like our science fair, our fall and spring festivals, and even our annual Vista Olympics even bigger and more organized. I am really excited to have PE, music, art, and all of my other classes in our new spaces. It's going to make it so much easier and more fun to learn. I love it here at Vista Heritage, and it has helped me a lot in getting ready for college and career, and teaching me to be respectful, responsible, and resilient, like our three Rs. Having a new facility and classroom would help me, make me feel more confident, cared for, and proud. When I hear about our new classrooms and multipurpose room, I get so excited about my future and going to school every day, and I know my friends feel the same way. I hope you support this project and help me make this plan and my dream a reality. Thank you.
Thank you, Kendra.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. My name is Nancy Gomez, and I am a parent at Vista Heritage Global Academy, and this is my daughter's second year at Vista. Let me begin by saying that we appreciate your time and the opportunity to testify about my personal experience as a parent here at Vista. My daughter attended a district school from first to fifth grade, and I volunteered every year. However, I never felt like my feedback was important to the school staff. In August 2017, all that changed. My daughter and I met Dr. Felch at an event where he spoke about Vista. His vision caught my full attention. I used to think the school was a private school because the setting is very personal and different from other schools. I was shocked to find out that it was a public education school. I do not, I did not think twice and immediately enrolled my daughter. I remember the first day, I received a warm welcome by the office manager, Ms. Maricela. I knew my daughter and I were in the right place. As my daughter started school, a lot of changes were happening in the school. A new principal, new plans for an elementary school, and many other goals that needed to be reached. What I appreciate about this school is the core and true meaning that the school carries, to receive quality public education, open communication between the principals and parents, Dr. Felch's vision on prospering academically, and most importantly, the importance of having us parents being involved and up to date with what's happening in our children's schools. The school has prospered in so many ways, and Vista Heritage Global Academy is the beacon to our community, to those families who are looking for a school where their children are safe and receiving great education, and where parents are being listened to. Within a year and a half, my daughter has been attending this school. I have witnessed many goals being achieved socially and academically. My daughter's doing fantastic, and she's receiving great education. Like all schools, though, we all have our weaknesses, but nothing that cannot be strengthened. What we learned at Vista as a family is that if we fail, it does not mean to give up, because fail means first attempt in learning. And in the end, in fact, and it is not the end, that in fact, end means, that effort never dies. I believe every parent at Vista would have loved to be here, but not everybody was able to because of work schedule or other commitments. But for all the parents and community members who are here to support our project, please stand up. Para los padres y la comunidad que están aquí conmigo y apoyándonos, por favor, párense conmigo. We look forward to your response. We look forward to your response, and we just hope that you support to expand our school campus so that our teachers and staff can transform our children's experience. God bless you.
Thank you, Nancy. Does anybody else at this time want to comment on item number two? Hearing none. The public hearing is now closed. We'll bring it back to the commission. Any comment? Any comment?
I do. The issue with, in front of us this evening is based on land use. Would not matter between public school or charter school or anything. In my opinion, the Vista Heritage School application... In my opinion, the Vista Heritage School application met, based on development standard and required by Santa Ana Municipal Code that provide, the amendment would provide this school, allows the school permitted to use subjects complying with the operational standard. And we, we did receive some comment and also the letter and email from various different business owners and some resident concern about the parking spaces of the school. But again, based on Santa Ana Municipal Code, the school only required to provide 67 parking spaces. But the school, in the, on this new proposal, school would provide 144 parking spaces for the school. For that, in my opinion, I have no reason to support the application. I would support it. I would recommend, propose, I would recommend to...
Can I just spin on that?
Plaining, plaining commission at the City Council to adopt the ordinance, approve zoning ordinance amendment number 2019-01.
Second.
Okay. Second.
Under condition.
All right. Any other discussion from, go ahead, David?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Couple of questions for, for the staff to clarify, tonight's recommendation will ultimately go to the City Council for their consideration, correct? There, there are a, a number of different questions that I think still remain that I, I would just, would recommend or ask that staff provide for, once that the council actually has an opportunity to, to address it, to be able to, for them to have ultimately all the information needed. As I mentioned, based on the, the correspondence that we have received, there seems to be either conflicting information or misunderstanding from even the property owners who are out there, and, and based on the, the letters and even what was comments made here earlier. The, one of my colleagues here on the, on the commission also asked about the, the circulation, about the operational standards, what was going to be included. It appears that some of that is still yet, you know, pending, yet to be addressed. I think that might help address some of the questions that may come up, once, once council has an opportunity to see this. That might also address the, the question that some of the, the property owners, the adjoining property owners had, some of the questions that they presented. And one question that I do have is the, you know, the question on what's being, the question that ultimately the council, the commission, and then ultimately the council needs to decide is whether this location, where the specific development 82, whether a school, and a school the size that's being proposed is, is the appropriate location. Part of what speaks to that is the safety of the students, traffic. You mentioned, Mr. Figoso, a, a turn signal or a, a light signal at 5th and Sullivan. Is that, that certainly would help to be able to address safety? Is that something that is incorporated as part of this project and as a condition to this project, or is, how is that being treated?
It is not a condition of the project. We are currently searching for grant funding for the, for the lights. That could take a year or so to get the funding, another probably a year to implement it. So you're looking at probably two to three years. The school's obligation would be to provide a fair share contribution, so whatever they're contributing towards the traffic and the impacts for that light, and not to provide a dollar amount, which will have to be determined at a later date.
So, so again, a lot, a lot of, I think, questions left, left pending and up in the air. Ultimately, I think council will have their, have the opportunity to be able to address this, this further. Those are all my, my questions for...
Thank you, David. Thank you. Angie?
I guess following on that, we can just make sure that everybody's clear on the, what do you call it, the, where everybody, the assignments of parking, just so we can follow up on that.
Sure. We'll look into that also, yes, ma'am.
Okay. I have, I have a couple of comments. Number one is that, you know, I, I think that what was brought up in the beginning of the meeting regarding safety, I have a concern that in all of the discussions that we had tonight, there was discussion about student safety, student safety, student safety, but not how student safety was going to be handled. And I think a couple of points where you talked about six safety people, that's about 125 students per safety person that you're going to have there, and that's a lot of students to be under one person's eye and have an issue. I have an issue with that from the standpoint of just not having enough safety. I think the other thing is because this is an industrial complex that's sharing its, its existence with a, with a church and a school, I think that at 270 students, it may not be an issue, but at 800 students coming out of school and being on the same streets or parking, parking areas as other businesses are going to be there, I think that's, that presents a little bit of a challenge. I'd like to see more of a safety strategy that connects the school with the industrial park when it comes to just out-and-out movement of vehicles throughout that complex on a regular basis. I think from a parking standpoint, the thing that I would suggest is that if there is 67 quote cars that are going to be there or thereabouts, that there be some kind of permit parking that's managed within the, within the complex, not within the city, but within the complex. You know, when you go to a, when you go to Santa Ana College and you sign up for a class, you get a permit parking so you can park on the, on the parking lot. I would suggest the same thing be considered at this point in time because if not, we're going to constantly hear about somebody parking in the wrong place, and, you know, why are they over in this area when they're supposed to be over in that area? And I think that can be eliminated with a parking permit program that's permanent as well as temporary on a day-to-day basis. But I do want to go back and make sure that, you know, I think that it should be a condition of the operation agreement where we do something about safety because, you know, understand that a lot of charter schools are in industrial areas and, and areas that are not necessarily considered school properties and things of that nature. But at the same time, most of the, most of the charter schools that we've reviewed for one reason or another do have fencing, do have safety around the building and protecting the students and protecting the students when they're, you know, coming in and out of the school. And I didn't see that in tonight's presentation. So that's a concern that I have at this point in time. Any other comments?
Could we make that a condition, that there be parking permits issued to staff there?
We can make it a parking, we can make it a condition?
I think, I'd like to make a motion to add a condition that the school provide parking permits for staff at the school.
Okay. I think the other thing that, again, I'm just going to reiterate what I just said, safety is, in my mind, a key issue, and without a safety plan, I would not be comfortable with this moving forward, but if we had something that we could talk about. Colin, you've been, you've been sitting there going with your fingers, so if you want to come up and say something, you're more than welcome to come up and say something, okay?
Sorry. I just wanted to reiterate that we have six safety officers for our current amount of students. As we scale up, the plan is also to scale up safety, so I just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you for that clarification. Go ahead. Yeah?
Does the school have a, a gate right now, or is it just open campus right now?
Well, it's not an open campus. Everything is inside, and we have, I mean, we have security that is stationed at strategically at the entrances.
The buildings themselves are not surrounded by a gate?
No. Not, not, not a gate. There is a gate on the premises, but it does not restrict access in, in or out.
Is there a plan to sometime soon perhaps consider fencing in the school?
I mean, we, we could, we could get to that at a later date, but again, I don't want to necessarily go into too many details at this, at this time, but we, we definitely take safety, even above education. Safety is our number-one priority. We know that all of our parents put their kids in our hands, and so we, we take that very, very seriously.
I didn't realize the school did not have, was not enclosed. Didn't have that.
Thank you.
And then, since you're here, I mean, the, the flip side of that is that, you know, is there anything that signage-wise, for those that are visiting, not to be at the school, but to be at the businesses that exist there, is there anything that signage-wise says that there's students on the premises, or there's students that will be on the premises between certain times of the day? Because, you know, if I'm, if I'm coming in to visit a business that's in there, the last thing I'm going to think about, if there's nothing signage-wise or anything to tell me that there's children, the last thing I'm going to see is figures, and all of a sudden, 300 students come, you know, out of the door and start going home.
And, and we're very...
Without any kind of word, without any kind of indication, how do we stop that?
We're very open in working with the, the rest of the, the association. And again, the school has been here even way before Vista was here, so this, this is nothing new. And what we want to do is make sure that they're also inside more.
We agree. I agree with your statement. I've heard this several times tonight. Nothing's new. But frankly speaking, there's a lot of new things because this world that we're in at this point in time has changed.
Absolutely.
Okay? And forget about global, global change or anything, global climate, but the fact is, is that we've had a lot of incidences in schools with, you know, people coming in that were not supposed to be in that building and people outside the building. So I think that from a safety perspective, safety has changed over the last couple of years.
I, I agree 100%.
And in fact, that there was a school that was here back in 1985, that school probably is, you know, the, the issues that are surrounding that particular school were nothing near what we have today at any of our schools, public, private, or, or charter. We don't have any, we have issues, okay? So that's my concern. I'm listening to everybody else say that they're concerned about safety, but I'm not hearing any safety strategy.
Well, and I can assure you that as part of the plans, there are additional safety protocols that will be built in to the plans, so.
Well, I think that this has to be, I think...
No, no, they're, they're in the plans already. In terms of the school operation protocol, we are going to be making sure that this school is 100% safe, or as safe that, as it could realistically be, so.
Go ahead, Senator.
From listening to my fellow commissioners, there are a lot of what-ifs and lots of questions still on the table, and I, I just don't know if it's ready for us to vote on it. I don't know if we need to postpone this, take some of the things. I mean, it's a good project. We want to see it succeed, but there's a lot of, there are small issues, but they build up. And one of them is, is absolutely, you're right, is safety. We can't be responsible in voting and saying, "Go right ahead," when we're not securing the best possible safety plan and some of the other issues. So I don't know how some of you feel about postponing it, so these issues that have been brought up are addressed, and perhaps come back with a better safety plan?
Yep.
And with the light not coming in for three years, possibly more, impacts, I mean, we have schools in the city now that are an industrial, but they're enclosed, there's other measures, and I'd just like to see the same attention to the school, given to this school as well.
I would like to add that, as a footnote, could we add that a traffic and circulation plan be submitted and that a safety plan be submitted?
I'm sorry, could you...
Could, could we add as a footnote that a safety plan be submitted and a traffic and circulation plan be submitted?
We can add it as a, we can add it as a footnote to this, but the discussion, I think, has come out to say that at this point in time, there seems to be a number of things that we're adding to the motion that was on the table to begin with. And at what point in time do we turn around and say that we need to continue this and have staff come back and give us further information on the items that we've done as far as adding particular items? So that's, that's, that's the deliberation that we have right now. Kendia, do you?
May I make just one?
Sure. Go ahead.
I appreciate the time. I've worked in hundreds of different locations and schools, and I just want to address this idea of having, the idea that schools have some sort of fence that goes around the entire school. Fences do exist at many, many schools, and those fences exist to keep the play area safe from intruders coming in. But the vast majority of schools that I've ever worked in and that I've oversaw, you go straight into the building. You, the building itself, it's, it's very rare that you would have a gate and then the building. Almost all public schools, you can walk right up to that school, and that entrance is the, that is the first safety barrier for schools. And then the, the fences are what keep the children inside the play areas, and so by having a contained area, we will in fact have a fence around the entire school. It just happens to be, it'll be walls. But our school is no different than Spurgeon right next door, that you can walk right up to Spurgeon and knock on the front door. So I just want to, it's very common.
Yeah.
I mean, I've been at, I'm literally hundreds of schools.
There's no argument, there's no argument that it doesn't mean fences. But I do take exception to the statement on Spurgeon because Spurgeon does have a fence around its entire facility. And that's, I mean, so I'm just...
From walking up to the front of the, the door?
We're not talking about fencing the office off. We're, we're talking about providing a secure environment where not anyone randomly can enter on the left side of the school because it's just open. It's important to have visitors of a school go through the main office to be vetted, and, and therefore, that's our concern.
Go ahead.
So I've visited that school, Vista, and it looks very much like City Hall. We have all these walls. We don't have a fence around City Hall, or I think we have that one, but it's just an entrance, so it's a very industrial, industrial building, and it's very much like Spurgeon, where yeah, you have that, the only fence they have around is the field where they play soccer at. And the entrance for Spurgeon, I mean, if you walk in, you can just go to the front office, but they don't have that field to fence around, or they don't have to enclose that fence. But I do see the safety. I mean, it's, for me, it looks fine.
It's not a question of, of fence. In my, my book, it's not a fence. What it is, is it's just people being aware that are entering the industrial park, that they're entering not just an industrial park, but they're entering an education zone, a school zone, and somehow, 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 some way, they have to be aware, you know...
I invite you to come by. There are banners on all of the poles out in front. We have flags going across. We have amazing signage going all the way across the front. It's very hard not to know that this is a school.
But that's advertising. That's not safety.
And, but, and I actually, I, I, no, I agree. And I, we actually, I love that, I love the suggestion. And those are easy. Signage is easy. But it is, I think it's very clear that you're in a school zone when you're in this area.
Ken, anybody? So right now, we, Madam Secretary, could you read the current motion?
So we have a motion by Commissioner Nguyen. It was seconded by Vice Chair Contreras Leo with an added condition for the school to provide parking permits for staff. There was also a suggestion by the applicant to submit a safety plan and a traffic plan as part of that motion.
Okay. Are we satisfied with this at this point in time?
I also made a recommendation to add that restriction so that everybody's aware of it, because I feel like there was confusion in the emails and everything.
Can you repeat what you would like exactly to add to that condition?
The parking zones, zones for each building, right, Vince? Yeah, okay.
Okay. At this point in time, is there any other addition or deletion to the motion?
Do we need to still add the safety plan, make another motion to include the parking permit, the safety plan, and what was the other?
To add, to clarify the parking zones for each building?
Those three things. So there's three items? So we need a new motion for all three to be added, or?
As long as Ken, Ms. Commissioner Nguyen accepts those conditions that we just added, then we can go ahead and take a vote.
Yes, I agree.
So you've accepted all of the conditions at this point in time?
Except all the conditions set forth by other members.
Okay. No further discussion?
No.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Five-zero, two absents. Thank you. Appreciate everybody's attendance here tonight. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Hate to say it, Scott, but you lost your audience. I mean, we could have kept them around for you, but, you know.
We'll listen.
We'll listen. Hurry up before Vince gets back.
Hi, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. I know it's been a long evening already, so I'm happy to share with you an overview of our program and entertain any questions and get into as much detail as you would like, depending on kind of what everybody's schedule is like. We did provide a copy, a hard copy of the presentation, so we won't be using a slide deck on the screen at all for this part of the agenda. Many of you are likely very aware of the four decades-plus work that Santa Ana has been doing, bringing residents together with their voluntary block groups and neighborhood associations, and how those associations have grown in capacity and evolved and accomplished a multitude of things across the city. And so tonight, I'm here to share with you a brief refresher, a little bit of an update on some contemporary things that we're working on, so that you'll have that perspective and sort of that high-level kind of overview. We included our statement of purpose and values with this presentation, and I really wanted to share with you that our focus is really on being solution-oriented as staff working with residents in their neighborhoods. In many of our neighborhoods, there are deeply entrenched, thorny and problematic issues that are fairly complex, that are not easily resolved. It's not just a simple matter of getting some asphalt out there to fix a pothole or trimming a tree. Lots of times, issues that are unresolved in our neighborhoods require an interdisciplinary response. And so that's why we try and take a patient sort of approach and be very solution-oriented in working with residents and resolving those issues. That continues to be one of our main focuses. There are three elements of our program. The first part is working with residents in their neighborhood associations. Our focus is on leadership training and capacity building for our neighborhood leaders. That really is the centerpiece of the work that we do. The reason why that's the case is that we did some research on what differentiates successful and effective voluntary block group neighborhood associations across the U.S., what differentiates the successful ones from the unsuccessful ones. And it turns out, having organizational capacity is really the, sort of the difference in the successful outcomes. And so if you flip to the page right behind our map, this assessment framework, it gives you an idea of the throughput model that we use to really evaluate how we're going about working with neighborhoods and why we do what we do. The city of Santa Ana is really heavily invested in the work that we do with neighborhood associations, and so we as staff felt obligated to really identify some foundational material that I apologize if it's, you know, super academic or something. I promise you that we don't lead neighborhood association meetings with this throughput chart and throughput model, but we think it's really instructive and really helpful to kind of understand that the input with regard to our voluntary neighborhood associations is the energy that drives the association. It's the interest and what it is that people in their neighborhoods are trying to accomplish. Typically, we find them being concerned about something going on in their neighborhood or very, very motivated to bring some positive energy to their neighborhood. That is sort of the driver that sort of brings people to the table. We know what the output is, and that is if they accomplish something at the end of the line. And what we find is that the throughput is really the key part of successful neighborhood associations, including their ability to have good leadership, the ability to communicate with people, to capture their record of accomplishments and where they're going. And there's a whole list of those items under that throughput grid there. And so for that reason, we focus on leadership training and capacity building for our resident leaders. What we find, and you already know this, but, you know, our staff are really objective with regard to the work that we do with residents in our neighborhood associations. We don't prejudge the work that they're doing and what their interests are. We certainly, we don't go out to them to get them to support a certain development project or a school or anything like that. That's really for them to decide for themselves. And we encourage them to participate in the civic engagement process, whether that be through their neighborhood association, coming to a commission hearing, going to a city council meeting, learning more about what's contemplated and what's proposed, demystifying that whole process. That's kind of what we're about with regard to the residents in their neighborhood associations. You're very familiar, I'm sure, already with communication linkages, the COMLINC forum, which includes leaders of seven of our neighborhoods who come together as a board and set the agenda for monthly meetings that focus on public policy issues of citywide significance. And I'm sure each of you at one point in time has attended a COMLINC meeting and sort of have an idea of what that's about. And so that sort of is a big picture regarding our work with residents and their neighborhood associations. That's sort of why we sort of go about doing what we do. We have an excellent contacts database that we use as part of our program. We have a 12,000-person, one-to-many relational database that we use. And so what that means is that the one basically is the contact. Each person, like Angie as an example, is in our database once, but Angie may be on 14 or 15 different interest lists. The Windsor Village neighborhood list as an example, the COMLINC list, the faith-based roundtable list, any number of lists. And so that's kind of our system for managing our contacts. So we have around 12,000 contacts. We have over 95 different lists basically in that system, so our 64 neighborhoods, 52 of which are active right now, plus another 40 or so other interest areas essentially that people can be on those contact lists for. So we use that for mailers, for telephone reminders, for email notifications for people. That's sort of our main repository of contact information that we've gathered over time. The second area that we focus on involves improving the city's responsiveness on an agency level to problems that residents have in their neighborhoods. So many times, it's really, really difficult to navigate City Hall. It's difficult to know which is the right office to call or the right person to talk to. It can be very, very frustrating for people in many instances, especially if you have a complex problem that you're sort of involved with. And so my colleague, Margarita Macedonio, who's actually at the COMLINC board meeting tonight, otherwise she would be up here with me. She and I lead teams of managers from different agencies in the city to be able to sustain that engagement, that coordination and collaboration that's necessary to resolve those types of issues. And so you may be aware of some of the work that we've done in those areas. Lots of times, they involve looking at the infrastructure, traffic safety, lighting, community standards, any number of things that require work across a number of different organizations and agencies, both here in City Hall and outside of City Hall. So those are our inter-agency teams. And then the third and final area that we focus on is a social capital initiative. We call it our Resource Network Initiative. And there's a functional org chart in the packet also for you as a takeaway. And so the idea behind the Resource Network Initiative is that our neighborhoods and our neighborhood associations are not islands unto themselves. We feel that it's really important that our neighborhoods work proactively to work in coordination with other stakeholders within their neighborhood and the general area. And so if there's a school in the neighborhood, we think having a really, a great open channel of communication with the principal of the school and with the leader of the parent group of the school as an example, those are really great starting points to improve cohesion in the neighborhood. To the extent that there are businesses interested in what's going on in the neighborhood, we encourage those sort of contacts. Faith-based organizations are very, very interested in what's going on in the surrounding community. And so when you start to aggregate all those organizations in Santa Ana, this is no exaggeration, we have like between 500 and 600 of these organizations in Santa Ana that really care about what's going on in the community. We've got our 64 neighborhoods. We have over 100 homeowner associations with CCNRs in Santa Ana. We've got over 60 parent groups at schools, whether they be charter, public, private. We've got 28 mobile home parks in Santa Ana. I think I mentioned 100 faith-based organizations. We've got a couple hundred nonprofit, community-based organizations in Santa Ana, Boys and Girls Club, Latino Health Access, any number of other groups like that, our sports leagues, huge presence, huge footprint in Santa Ana. And so when you start to collect the contact information and develop relationships with all these people, these people are in our database, right? And we find ways to bring our neighborhood leaders and residents together with these organizations periodically to try and accomplish bigger-picture objectives. And so that's our Resource Network Initiative in a nutshell. So with regard to some new things that we're working on, just two quick notes, and I'll take some questions because it's been a lengthy evening already. I can see that everyone has left, so I realize that. The first one is what we call our Civic Atlas Initiative. And so just give me a minute so I can sketch this out for you. Lots of organizations, you know, are trying to figure out how to get people to follow them in social media, you know, like Friend Me or, you know, all that sort of stuff. And so, you know, we're a city. We're like an institution in lots of ways, and we're really not that much fun, actually. And we're not that interesting either as a city. You know, like, "Follow me on Facebook, we're so amazing," or something. And so rather than do that, what we've tried to set up through the Civic Atlas basically is a way to encourage people to use our hashtag so that we're able to index basically content that they reference through their own social media channels, so that we're able to improve communication in neighborhoods. And so I want to give you an idea of how this works. We're rolling this out now, basically. Think about a neighborhood that has an emergent problem that's going on, basically, a discreet geographic area that has a problem. Let's say that there's a ruptured water main and there's construction that's going to need to take place for three months, basically, and major points of entry into an area of the city is going to be very limited because of road closures, there's going to be noise, there's going to be inconvenience in lots of ways. And so we would deploy our Civic Atlas in a small area like that essentially, where we would leaflet the neighborhood and provide people with the hashtag basically for that and encourage them to use the hashtag on their social media posts. So again, they're not following us, they're just using their social media the way that they ordinarily do, but include our hashtag. We're able to index those comments that they make on social media and map it basically on a smartphone app that people can, in their neighborhood, can see what everybody else is saying on social media down to a discreet block level basically, to try and improve the communication not only with the city, but also among the neighbors, so people know about it. So that's one thing that we're working on. We think that there's a real value in that because it essentially indexes social media content and puts it in a, like a GIS map in a map form on a smartphone that people can use to better understand what the experience of other people in their neighborhood is in response to the situation and enables us to communicate more concisely with people. It's not something that's currently available, as far as we know, in any other channel. And so it sort of turns the social media equation on its ear in lots of ways, and we think it's a great opportunity there. The second new thing that we're working on, just want to share with you really briefly, is that staff just completed a nomination submitted to Neighborhoods USA, which is a national advocacy organization, on behalf of the Santa Anita neighborhood. There's a category for recognition through Neighborhoods USA for Social Revitalization of the Year neighborhood, essentially. And so we think that there's a really compelling and remarkable story coming out of our Santa Anita neighborhood with regard to social revitalization. Again, we're not talking about the physical revitalization, we're not talking about necessarily any number of other indicators, but what we're seeing in that neighborhood is that the leadership of the neighborhood has put together a whole combination of events and initiatives that has really broken down a lot of the walls between people and gotten people to bring their kids out and get to know each other better, have more common understanding. This whole effort really got a jumpstart back in 2017 when the, and I'm looking at Commissioner Benavides, when Love Santa Ana was staged at Santa Anita Park, and there were a number of improvements there. And people in the neighborhood saw for the first time that it was possible to actually have a large-scale effort to have a larger community benefit accomplished by people on a voluntary basis. And I think that really inspired people in the neighborhood and gave them the confidence to sort of move ahead. We've had lots of beneficial byproducts of this as the work that they're doing has gotten the attention of other people. So Santa Ana College, as an example, has established a new scholarship fund for high school youth who live in Santa Anita to go to Santa Ana College. Never existed before. What happened was that Santa Ana College looked at their enrollment and concluded that there was sort of the hole in the donut. There were very, very few kids from Santa Anita who actually went to Santa Ana College, probably went on to college at all. And so they agreed to set up the separate outreach initiative, which was awesome. The County of Orange also provided grant funding for Enhanced Health and Nutrition Services through America on Truck. That's another success story in the neighborhood, for sure. And then, and I'm not making this up, but, and then, you know, like, the leaders of our neighborhood started having these informal working relationships with local elected officials, you know, County Supervisor Andrew Doe as an example. And so the county now is in discussions with the city about putting together some in-kind donations and a capital program basically to improve the Santa Anita Center. And that's something that actually was sort of on the top of the list of our neighborhood leadership in that neighborhood, and it was only because they raised that issue and sort leadership in that neighborhood, and it was only because they raised that issue and sort of pressed the supervisor that he was interested in exploring something like that. And so, it's kind of taken on a life of its own, which is really wonderful. And we, as staff, felt that it was something that was needed to be recognized here in Santa Ana and certainly considered as part of this national award program. Just as a refresher, our Floral Park neighborhood received recognition as Neighborhood of the Year through Neighborhoods USA, probably around 15 or 20 years ago, in a different category. It wasn't the social revitalization, it was really the Neighborhood of the Year, the most beautiful, the most together neighborhood in the U.S., which was a great award, for sure. The program to recognize the Neighborhood of the Year this year will be held in Southern California, which is really nice. And so, it's a national conference, and it'll be here in Southern California. And so, we're really hopeful that our resident leaders and their neighborhood association will be recognized to further inspire them and motivate them to sort of keep going and to keep delivering improved opportunities for kids in the neighborhood and a better place for people to envision their future, you know? So, anyway, that's the long version of the presentation, and I cleared the whole house. So, thank you so much for your patience. Yes?
Two questions, actually. For the hashtag, I'm just curious, will it only work for your neighborhood, or can you see what's happening in other neighborhoods? I mean, will there be like the common word "Santa Ana" and then the neighborhood name, so then anything "Santa Ana hashtag" you can see? Or is it just for your neighborhood?
So, because we have, you know, every organization has finite resources, right? And so, we're anticipating identifying two neighborhoods, basically, per year that have an emergent situation, essentially. And so, we actually want to be able to deploy this in a situation where there's a genuine need, you know?
Okay, so it won't be something that's continuous, it's only based on a situation?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and so, it could be for a finite amount of time. It could be for three or four months, it could be for three weeks, it just sort of depends.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's how we're going to initially roll it out. It could be that there's a benefit, there's a city-wide benefit, you know, we conclude that, and then that's sort of a different model, basically, for implementing it, for sure.
And just out of curiosity, what, since this is what you live and breathe, with the changes that are coming with going towards and the lines changing, how do you see that affecting the neighborhood associations? Will it affect them? Will it change them at all?
Yeah, so we, you know, we know who we work for, you know? I mean, we know that we have a mayor and a city council, and we have a city manager and our executive leadership, so we're very aware of that. But the, our whole Neighborhood Initiative Program, all the services, the boundaries, are completely independent of any of those ward boundaries.
So, the areas will still?
Yes, there'll be no change in any of the neighborhood boundaries or any of the work that we're doing as a result of, you know, the changing of the ward boundaries or the changing of the election system.
That's good.
You know, our program has actually been through, you know, four or five census efforts, you know, where the clerk of the council changes the boundaries in response to the census. And so, yeah, we've been through that a number of times. Thank you.
David?
Thank you, Mr. Trump. Scott, the work that you and Margarita and the Neighborhood Initiatives Program does for the city is invaluable. Glad that we're giving you an opportunity to highlight some of that work. A number of us up here on the commission have, at one point or another, been a part of Neighborhoods or CommLink or a number of the different programs, initiatives that you've been a part of. A question I have for you, you've also, you mentioned some of the evolution and changes with regard to the district lines, census, you know, re-drawing of lines. At least during the time that I've known you and been a part of neighborhood improvement activities or neighborhoods, there's been a shift between, a couple of things. One is, I think there was at one point, at least three districts in, that I recall, maybe more, and district managers. At this point, I think it's just yourself and Margarita. There's also, previously you were, this program, the work that you do is under the Community Development Agency, currently now under planning. Just curious, get a little bit of input on how the city could best continue to support the work that Neighborhood Improvement does and anything, without necessarily putting you on the spot, but anything that is, that perhaps resources that you had, that the program had under CDA that currently doesn't have, or things that are, that under planning that have enhanced it, just in general, just curious, as a neighbor, resident, how that, those transitions have impacted and how they can be, again, how the city can continue to resource and support the good work that you all do.
Thank you. You know, my colleague Margarita and I, you know, our formal training is actually in city planning. We're both products of the Graduate School of Architecture and Urban Planning at UCLA. And so, we do this work by choice. We weren't just looking for a job or something, or sort of fell into this, and it sort of worked out really well or something. We do this, you know, because we're really committed to doing it, and it's very, very meaningful on a professional level and also greatly needed in this community. At the same time, though, we feel very, very fortunate to work here in Santa Ana where there's a, you know, four or five decade-long commitment, essentially, to residents and their neighborhoods as the, you know, the bona fide vehicle for community engagement, civic engagement and participation. And so, we're very humbled, you know, by Santa Ana because the city goes, you know, 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, and there's always things happening, and it's always a challenge to sort of keep up on what's going on, even for us. You know, people like to think that we know everything about every neighborhood and we know everybody, and so that that's not the case at all, at all. And so, it is very, very humbling in lots of ways to work here. With regard to, you know, our staffing and the commitment, we find that our program has been a tremendous beneficiary of information technology. In fact, there probably isn't another department in the city that's benefited more from the evolution of communication technology, whether it's the internet, cell phones, than our team, actually. Because communication is one of the biggest elements of kind of what we do, and being able to communicate really quickly and effectively with people, huge difference, for sure. There's no question about it. That's enabled us to be a lot more effective, for sure. What we have found is that we have a blueprint or sort of a plan for moving ahead, you know, into the future with regard to, you know, what our recommendations are for staffing and what sort of initiatives we want to be able to sort of apply ourselves to. We just had this conversation this morning with our director, Mintai, about, you know, our ability, Margarita and I, our ability to be able to devote time to higher-value objectives that bring about community-wide benefits, you know, and have more of our time freed up to be able to focus on those types of things and not to be as concerned about the minutia, you know, of licking envelopes or putting stamps on them, or, I'm just joking with you, but. So, we just had that conversation this morning. You know, we're moving as an organization that direction, which was really, really awesome. So, I think that what we found, Commissioner, was that we were in the Community Development Agency for years and years, you're correct, and because we're city planners, you know, we were spending more and more of our time, actually, over in the planning department because the community's expectation was changing regarding the built environment, essentially. People wanted to know what was going on with regard to the physical form of their community earlier and earlier. It was no longer sufficient for people to be invited to the city council meeting when the vote was taken, the final vote was taken on a project. People wanted to hear about things earlier, they wanted an opportunity to meet the developer, and so, the Sunshine Ordinance and some of the other efforts that the city implemented sort of complements that in lots of ways. And so, in the city of New York and some other really large cities in the U.S., there's actually three divisions within the planning department. There's current planning, which you're very familiar with. We've got our distinguished colleague Vince Fregoso here, who's the ace at current planning. He's our principal planner over that unit. You guys know Verney Carver Hall. You know, Verney is our principal planner, responsible for comprehensive planning, right, advanced planning, focusing on policy. And then, there's a third section in cities that we consider to be more enlightened, and they have a section called community planning, essentially. And so, the idea, when we moved to planning, basically, was to take our Neighborhood Initiative Program and all the resources and services that we provided and establish a community planning section, essentially, in the Planning and Building Agency, and complement the work of our city planners and enable our city to actually accomplish more and be more effective in working with the community. And so, that's the reason why we're there. We're really pleased to be there, it's been a great place to land. Really, really tough for me, you know, I worked in the Community Development Agency for 25 years, you know, it's really kind of tough to leave that agency, and, but it's been a great fit, both with Hassan Agani, with Min, working with Candida. So, yeah, we're really happy to be there. We feel appreciated, and we feel like we have a good roadmap moving into the future.
Thank you. Thank you, Scott, for your answer.
You mentioned that your method of communication, very quickly, effectively, the resident, how you describe your method of communication to the different neighborhood association, how the neighborhood resident can able to, you know, communicate with our city and then, you know, concerned about, for example, public safety or, you know, public work problem and so on, how did he do that effectively?
So, I have a couple responses to your question, because it's kind of a multi-part question in some ways. But first, I just want to lead off with this one notion, and that is that we're bottom-line oriented and we keep an eye on our budget, we have fixed amount of financial resources. We try and accomplish as much as we can with the resources that we have. It costs us around 80 cents to send out a flyer to support a neighborhood association meeting. Every single time the flyer goes out, because it's the postage, the material, the copying, the labor, you know, all that sort of stuff, it costs us about 80 cents. It costs us 12 cents to have a phone call made to remind people about a meeting. And we've set up a system whereby the leader, excuse me, the leader of the neighborhood association can record the message so that it's not a robo-call. Instead, it's, "Hi, this is Ken Nguyen. We're getting together over at the community center to bring people up to date on what's been happening in the neighborhood, please come out if you can, you know, my contact information is such and such, if you want to reach me, whatever." And so, huge difference, right? You're talking about 15% basically of the cost, right, to do the phone call versus the flyer. Likewise with email. Email is virtually free, and so, we are moving away, as an example, from informing people by mail and using other forms of communication, right, to notify them. What our goal is with these neighborhood meetings is, I hate to say this, but I think our goal is not to get 500 people to come to every meeting, okay? Because usually, it's only when people are angry, actually, that that many people come out. And, you know, we try to be proactive, actually, you know, proactive instead of reactive. And so, our goal in lots of ways is to get a good representative sample of people in the neighborhood to come together and to talk about things that are going on, to capture that record and to be able to share that information here at City Hall, and for the people at City Hall to be able to exchange information, sort of with the neighborhoods as well, around policy issues or projects. And so, what we find, Ken, is that our neighborhoods have their own distribution systems for information. More and more, that's the case. And so, if you go to our Park Santiago neighborhood, as an example, and you look at their utilization under Nextdoor, they have the absolute highest utilization of Nextdoor in the entire city, basically, that neighborhood. The highest percentage of households are on that. And I don't think there's any mistaking, that they're pretty effective, actually, in communicating with each other pretty quickly around any number of issues that they want to communicate with each other on. And so, we're tapping into that. We, as the city of Santa Ana, have like administrator rights in Nextdoor, and so, we're able to send information one way, basically, in Nextdoor, we're able to broadcast the information out. So, we think that by having those representative samples of people come together, by having those people in turn share information among their networks, that those are really good compliments for the existing vehicles that we have in place. And we're convinced that, you know, it's an exponentially greater number of people are finding out about things today than was the case 10 years ago or 20 years ago, for sure. There's no question about it.
You just answered my second question, too, because there is technology out, there are technology out there, like example of a Nextdoor. My neighborhood, Morning Sunwood, you know, we communicate with each other very effectively. We let us know every tiny little thing happening in our neighborhood through Nextdoor apps. And then, I'm very happy to hear that city of Santa Ana staff, you know, will use that, utilize that technology, the Nextdoor, to communicate with the residents in Santa Ana.
Your neighborhood is a great example because the leadership of your neighborhood basically said, "You know something? We don't need to meet every month. We are communicating very effectively through Nextdoor, let's meet on a quarterly basis or a biannual basis," or something. So, they're really embracing it in lots of ways.
Right. Thank you.
Scott, who sends out the advisory message and the community message? Because I get those, and those are kind of what you're talking about, they let us know what's going on in the city, if there's going to be closures, if there's going to be an event at a certain park in a neighborhood. Those have been really helpful.
So, our team, our team prepares the, what we call the Items of Interest Broadcast. So, if it says items of interest to the Santa Ana community, that's from our team. If you get a NICSIL message, that subscription is handled by our communications team in the city manager's office.
So, what's the difference between advisory message and community message?
So, the difference for us is that we do our Items of Interest Broadcast as sort of a digest kind of format. So, we typically put five or six or seven different pieces of information in that, and it goes out to our entire address book. There are some people who don't want to get the, sometimes two or three alerts a day. Basically, they didn't sign on for that, you know? And so, they would rather get something in a digest form that is less frequent.
That's the community message.
Yeah.
Got it. I get both. I don't mind them.
Scott, obviously, I mean, you and Margarita do an incredible job with the neighborhoods, and you've done it for a long time, and we appreciate that.
Thank you.
The one question I had, and this is just a little confusion on the presentation, but in your, in your pages that you've got in here, you've got 1, 2, 3 areas listed as a statement of, you know, the different things that you're doing within the city. But then, you look at this map where it's back to Scott's got one side and Margarita's got the other side. So, I'm a little, you know, just a little confused as to the three areas versus the two areas.
So, yeah, I think that we've really embraced that we actually have three components to our program, the neighborhoods, the inter-agency teams, and the resource network. And it's sort of like a 1, 2, 3 combination, and so, we just sort of emphasize that. To the extent that that's confusing, we can update the graphic in the presentation now in the future so that it's a little bit clearer.
I mean, it's a little confusing for me, but, you know, there's a lot of things that are confusing to me from time to time, but, you know, it just seems like...
You and me both.
Yeah, I mean, it just seems like you're pitching three areas, and then, all of a sudden, you've got two people, and it's just doesn't, you know, I mean, like I said, you and Margarita do a tremendous job. This one just is a little confusing to my, to my liking at this point.
Thank you.
The other thing is, is that, just going back to the communication, I mean, one of the things that happens from my standpoint is, I'll look at the telephone number that pops up on my screen, and if I don't like it for some reason, or it doesn't say where it's from, you know, I'm just going to not answer that message. Do you have any indication of how many people? If you've got 12,000 people that are getting a robo-call, so to speak, how many of those are opening their phones or listening to the call or listening to the message? Do you have any statistics on that?
We do get statistics on that. We typically, we don't use the voice shot, the robo-call system across the entire city. We typically, we don't use the voice shot, the robo-call system across the entire city, and we, we use it sort of strategically in lots of ways. And the reason why is that it is expensive to use it, actually, even though it's just 12 cents a call, but you could see how that sort of aggregates up a lot. The city is going through a telecommunication upgrade, and in the future, the city trunk line will not be the number that basically goes out for people. And so, in the future, we have an indication that there'll be more identifying information available so that when those voice shot calls go out or anything else, that there'll be more identifying information, and it'll, we expect to get sort of an improved response from people based on that. I totally agree with you. Just as an aside, you know, you know, with everybody using smartphones, they do screen their calls and, or they'll call back the number that they received the call from, and if it's the city trunk line, you know, no one ever answers that, I mean, you all know that already, that the city trunk line is not answered by an actual person. And so, that's a problem for us in this age, for sure. And so, this telecommunication upgrade that's well underway should address a lot of those issues.
No, I mean, the system, I mean, if I get it, if I do listen to it, I hear it from comlink, and it's going to be the upcoming meeting, I'll usually listen to hear what the agenda is and everything else, but there's many times I just sit there and go, nope, I'm not gonna listen to it. So, anyway, you've explained that, that's, well, it's a good explanation, I appreciate you.
Yeah, I think that, I don't, I wouldn't consider you to be the typical resident of the city, I mean, I think you're on a lot of our contact lists.
Right.
So, there's, you sort of have a lot of exposure, but for the typical resident of a neighborhood who's on one list, you know, they maybe get a call every other month or, one call every other month or something, one or two emails every other, you know, it isn't like they get bombarded with a lot of information, so.
So, did I, did I understand you right to say that the city is utilizing Nextdoor as far as, you know, doing some communication citywide? Is that...
Yes, we, what happened with regard to Nextdoor was the police department was the owner of the account.
Right.
And they added our team to the account, but whenever I tried to send something out, it came out that I was from the Santa Ana Police Department, which is not true.
Right.
And so, I was very uncomfortable sending anything out, basically, because I didn't want to misrepresent, you know, that I was communicating with the public under the auspices of the police. And so, our city manager's office has now reorganized the way that the city maintains its Nextdoor account, and so, we now have the ability to reference neighborhood initiatives when we send the information, and we're starting to use it now, we're going to be moving ahead in that direction.
So, is your department, your group, the only one that uses that mechanism, or is it something that does get used by the police or does get used by other agencies in the city?
So, I can't speak for the police department, the city manager's office is using it, is moving ahead to use it, our team is going to be using it, for sure, and I believe that there's at least one other group that's interested in having its own, like, you know, separate title, essentially, in the account as well. Yeah, I agree with you, it's an underutilized resource, and we get the statistics every week on the numbers of people that are participating in Nextdoor, and it's, yeah, it's phenomenal, the growth, it's great.
Yeah, I think it's, there's other challenges in that respect, too, because it's become, it started out sort of as a police, you know, neighborhood watch type situation, and it's evolved and morphed into much more than that.
So, that's the reason why we like our Civic Atlas, just to go full circle, the Civic Atlas, right, the smartphone-enabled content where people use a hashtag, is curated content, so basically, you won't have the sofa that's available for somebody to buy or the babysitter that's necessary, the lost dog, it'll just have the information that people are interested in about what's going on in their neighborhood, and so, it'll, that's the reason why we're really excited about it, because it kind of cuts all that, some of that clutter out.
Just last one, I mean, just going back to normal, you know, standard operating procedure over the last 15, 20 years with comlink and everything else, I mean, it seems like it's always the same small group of people that show up for comlink and everything else. Has there been some ideas or concepts thrown out to where, instead of everybody having to come down to the police conference room down there, maybe it goes on to Channel 3 as some kind of, you know, not every month, but some, every other month type situation where more information can be had, and it can be had where it can be recorded, replayed at any point in time and open up to a larger group of people, but the same theme that you're trying to do with regards to comlink, it can be, you know, brought forth in a video stage?
Yes, we have been having conversations about that, because now that the city has the bandwidth, you know, on its website, we're now able to explore those sort of options. I think that in the past, it would have, the whole thing would have imploded, basically, if we tried to do something like that. The other thing, just to be really candid with you, and I would share this even if the members of the comlink board were here, but just last month when we met with them, we had a really candid conversation with them, that in many ways, the opinions that they hold really dearly are really out of step with the electorate in the city, that all of them were very, very surprised at the outcome of the November election in any number of areas. And I'm not supporting one thing or another, but they all felt very strongly about certain things, and the electorate felt differently.
Right.
And so, we reminded them that if they want to continue to be relevant, and if they want to be a place where people feel comfortable going and sharing wide-open ideas about the future of the city and having discussions, that they need to first recognize that, you know, have that realization, and be proactive to try and widen those circles of contacts, essentially. And, you know, what was so refreshing was that they agreed with us. I mean, I, we were taking a risk, obviously, telling them that, but we sort of felt like they needed to hear it in lots of ways, and to their credit, they understood.
And all due respect, four or five years ago, that may not have been the same situation.
Right, they would have kicked me out or something.
Right, exactly, which they used to do, anyway.
Yes.
Exactly, I mean, that's, that's true. So, I mean, it's, it's something that, you know, comlink is supposed to be the different, the connector between the city and the neighborhoods, and it just seems to be almost like a hourglass, you know, it just kind of comes in, it's just a small, small, you know, spigot at this point in time, whereas we've got a lot of neighborhoods and a lot of city things happening, how do we make best use of skill sets and time and everything else to make comlink a very strong factor, not just a factor?
Yep, it's, I think that we're in sync, you and I are in sync.
Right.
With regard to kind of what, what needs to be done and where we're going, and I, you know, we're not getting there as quickly as I would like, but I do believe that we're going to get there.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, Scott? Good? Scott, thanks a lot, we appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Okay, we will go on to staff comments.
I have none. I have none, thank you.
You have none, okay. Candia?
I have none.
Vince? Okay. Sarah, we'll ask you if you want to, okay, good. All right, let's go on to commission comments.
No comments, Mr. Trump, thank you.
Cynthia?
No comment.
Okay, well, let's make it unanimous and call it no comments.
Everybody will go home.
Meeting is adjourned, thank you.